I now call to order the November nineteenth, twenty twenty four Board of Trustees Special Meeting. Time being six thirty P M. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Cannon.
Here.
Present.
Mayor.
Present.
Trustee Teetz.
Here.
Trustee Wiegand.
Here.
Mayor Proton Mason.
Here.
Shosse.
Here. Thank you. Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening? Perfect. Any conflicts of interest with the agenda this evening?
Quick question. Item D, is that still part of the agenda tonight? Presentation?
No, Mayor Shosse will do a quick knowledge of the certain presentation.
Yeah, thank you. You're welcome. Um, so just for clarification, no conflicts of interest, correct? Perfect. Okay, thank you. Um, now it's time for public comment. Members of public wishing to speak will be given three minutes. Please state your name for the record.
Christine Geter. Wanted to give a Thanksgiving proclamation by the President of the United States of America, proclamation where is it the duty of all nations to acknowledge the providence of Almighty God, to obey his will, to be grateful for his benefits, and to humbly implore his protection and favor. And whereas both houses of Congress have by their joint committee requested me to recommend to the people of the United States a day of public Thanksgiving and prayer, to be observed by acknowledging with grateful hearts the many signal favors of the Almighty God, especially by affording them an opportunity peacefully to establish a form of government for their safety and happiness. Now, therefore, I do recommend and assign Thursday, the twenty-sixth day of November next, to be devoted by the people of these states to the service of that great and glorious being who is a beneficent author of all that is good, all the good that was, that is, and that will be, that we may then all unite in rendering unto him our sincere and humble thanks for his kind care and protection of the the people of this country previous to their becoming a nation, for the signal and manifold mercies and the favorable interpositions of his providence, which we experienced in the course and conclusion of the late war, for the great degree of tranquility, union, and plenty, which we have since enjoyed, for the peaceable and rational manner in which we have been able to establish constitutions of government for our safety and happiness, and particularly the national one now lately instituted for the civil and religious liberty with which we are blessed, and the means we have of acquiring and diffusing useful knowledge, and in general, for all the great and various favors which he has been pleased to confer upon us. And also that we may then unite in most humbly offering our prayers and applications to the great Lord and ruler of nations, and beseech him to pardon our nation and other transgressions, to enable us all, whether in public or private stations, to perform our several and relative duties, relative duties, properly and punctually, to render our nation government, national government, a blessing to all the people by constantly being a government of wise, just, and constitutional laws, to protect and guide all sovereigns and nations, to promote the knowledge and practice of true religion and virtue, and the increase of science among them and us, and generally to grant all mankind such a degree of temporal prosperity as he alone knows to be best, given under my hand at the city of New York, the third day of October, in the year of our Lord seventeen eighty-nine, by George Washington. And last but not least, George Washington said, "It is impossible rightly to govern the world without God and the Bible." Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Tanya Merritt, a Wellington resident and owner of the Wellington Welcoming Wagon. And I would just like to ask that we light up all of Cleveland for Christmas holidays, or the holidays in general, not just Two Third Street. I know in the past it's been said that there wasn't electric to be able to do that, but I know that there is. And so I'm requesting that we light it all up and show people Wellington, the spirit of Wellington. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no more further public comment. Um, now I will, um, read a proclamation recognizing fourth organization or faith organizations in the town of Wellington. Um, will those in attendance to accept the proclamation, um, please come forward, and then at the end we'll hand them out, shake hands, and then take a photo for the town. All right, proclamation recognizing the faith organizations in the town of Wellington. Whereas the town of Wellington is enriched by the diverse tapestry of its community, which includes a variety of churches and faith-based organizations that contribute significantly to the welfare and development of our town. And whereas these organizations embody the values of compassion, service, and community engagement, dedicating their time and resources to support those in need. And whereas the volunteers from these faith-based organizations play a vital role in addressing the challenges facing our residents, providing assistance, support, and outreach to individuals and families throughout Wellington. And whereas the Board of Trustees of the Town of Wellington acknowledged that faith-based organizations represent a significant part of our community, promoting inclusivity, understanding, and respect for all belief systems. Now, therefore, I, Kaler Shosse, the Mayor of the Town of Wellington, Colorado, do hereby proclaim September seventeenth to November twenty-fourth as Faith Organization Appreciation Week here in the Town of Wellington. I encourage, I encourage residents to recognize and celebrate the positive impact these organizations and their volunteers have on our community, while also working to promote an atmosphere of respect and collaboration among all members of our town regardless of their beliefs. In witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand, caused the Seal of Wellington, Colorado, to be affixed to this November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I did a sort of one-on-one at least.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Take care.
Okay, um, we will now recess the special meeting and open the Liquor License Authority Board. Time being six thirty-nine. Clerk, make it a roll call, please.
Yes.
Present.
Trustee Meyer.
Here.
Trustee Teetz.
Here.
Trustee Wiegand.
Here.
Mayor Proton Mason.
Here.
Mayor Shosse.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum for the authority.
Perfect, thank you. Um, first item will be, um, well, clerk, will you please read the title for item C one?
Avuncular Bob's T-Bar Inn and Brew Pub Operations Hotel and Restaurant Liquor License Renewal.
Perfect. And Hannah Hill, the town clerk, will present this item.
Thank you, Mayor, and, um, our president from here, just in the interest of time. Um, before you, for your consideration tonight, you have a renewal from T-Bar Inn and Brew Pub Operations, um, for their hotel and restaurant liquor license. The establishment, um, is in good standing with the Secretary of State's office and does have a valid sales tax license. You see in the packet, there were no concerns expressed from the Laramie County Sheriff's Office upon inspection, and staff does recommend the approval of the renewal as presented, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Um, any questions from the board on this item? No, okay. Any comments from the public on this item? No. Do I hear a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve Avuncular Bob T-Bar Inn and Brew Pub Operations LLC Hotel and Restaurant Liquor License Renewal.
I second.
Thank you. Miss Clerk, make it a roll call, please.
Trustee Cannon.
Yes.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Uh, Trustee Meyer.
Yes.
Trustee Teetz.
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mason.
Yes.
Um, Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
And the motion passes, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, clerk, will you please read the title for item C two?
Big T Ventures LLC Doing Business As Cantina Liquors Retail Liquor Store License Renewal.
Ms. Hill will also present this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you, for your consideration, you have the, um, liquor retail store license for Cantina Liquors. And they are in good standing with the Secretary of State as well. They do have a valid sales tax license, and as you see in the packet, the Laramie County Sheriff's Office does not express any concerns upon inspection. Um, staff also recommends the renewal of this, um, application, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Any comments from the public on this item? No. May I get a motion, or do I hear a motion?
I move to approve Big T Ventures LLC Doing Business As Cantina Liquors Retail Liquor Store City License Renewal.
I second.
Thank you. Miss Clerk, make it a roll call, please.
Trustee Cannon.
Yes.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee.
Yes.
Trustee Teetz.
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mason.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
The motion passes, Mayor.
Thank you. I will now close the Liquor License Authority Board at six forty-two. Um, and open up the special meeting. There will be no presentations this evening. Um, consent agenda, uh, will clerk please read the titles of the items in the consent agenda?
Resolution, um, number sixty-two dash twenty twenty-four, resolution appropriating funds of Town of Wellington Water Utility Hardship Program.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion on the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Miss Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Cannon.
Yes.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Meyer.
Yes.
Trustee Teetz.
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand.
Yes.
Um, Mayor Proton Mason.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
The motion passes, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, on to action items. Um, Miss Clerk, will you please read the title for item F one?
Yes, resolution number fifty-nine dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution of the Town of Wellington accepting construction of the water treatment plant expansion project.
Thank you. Dave Meyer will present on this. How about it, Dave?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. Back in twenty nineteen, the Town of Wellington closed an S R F loan for the water treatment expansion, amount of twenty-four million eight hundred thousand dollars. Um, that project has since come to a close this summer. Plant is operating successfully. As part of the, um, loan agreement for the S R F loan, uh, we have to get a resolution to C D P H E, accepting construction and the, uh, final pay applications for, uh, Hensel Phelps. So before you is that resolution, I'm here to ask, answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board on this item? No, okay. Any questions, um? Oh, yeah, now I'll open up for public comment. Any public comment on this item? No. All right, um, do I hear a motion on this item?
I move to approve resolution number fifty-nine dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution of the Town of Wellington accepting construction of the water treatment plant expansion project.
I second.
Miss Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Cannon.
Yes.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Meyer.
Yes.
Trustee Teetz.
Yes.
Uh, Trustee Wiegand.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mason.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Congratulations.
All right, Miss Clerk, will you please read the title for item F two?
Resolution number sixty dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution summarizing expenditures and revenues for each fund and adopting a budget for the Town of Wellington, Colorado, for the fiscal year beginning the first day of January twenty twenty-five and ending the last day of December twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia, Town Administrator, and Nick Redavid, the Town Finance Director slash Treasurer, will present on this item. Ms. Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor and trustees. Patty Garcia, Town Administrator. Every budget season brings new things to light, which we work to adjust and prepare for. The one thing that is consistent is the hard work and determination by you, the board, the residents' input, and the town staff in creating a budget that fulfills the expectations of residents and meets the needs of a growing community. Wellington has had its fair share of bumps in the road over the years, but I believe we are really on a cusp of really great things. For example, the completion of the water plant expansions has set us up for opportunities for growth. That's commercial, residential, and retail. The revitalizing Main Street Road project will create a new entryway into our downtown, which will be something we can all be proud of. There is much for Wellington to be thankful for, and we will continue to fight for the good things that our residents deserve. They deserve such things as safe routes to school, an efficient interchange off of I-25, retail stores and restaurants, and most importantly, lower water costs. And we're getting there. We're getting there. It will take continued work and a lot of grit to keep us pressing forward as a team to get these types of efforts to come to fruition. Some projects take years, others take multiple years. Projects and local government are a marathon. It's not a sprint, so it's going to take time, and us as a team, meaning the Board of Trustees, the residents, and staff, working as a team to continue moving forward on those items. The twenty twenty-five budget brings many of these things to the forefront. Once the budget is adopted, we'll start to work on our goals to meet the strategic plan goals of the Board of Trustees. I'm looking forward to twenty twenty-five and what the new year will bring for us. I'm going to turn this over to Nick Redavid, Redavid, Director of Finance and Town Treasurer. Since he started this spring, he has proven to be a very respected asset for the town, and I'm very proud of his work he's done on this budget this year. Very first budget, so excited. I'll turn it over to Nick.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and trustees. Excuse me, Nick Redavid, Finance Director and Town Treasurer. Before you tonight, there are three action items for consideration to approve the twenty twenty-five fiscal year budget for the Town of Wellington. As you are aware, this process began for staff back in July, involved the strategic plan adoption in August, and you have been hands-on since the beginning of October. There have been several updates to estimates, adjusted, adjustments to projections, and requests made by the board that have impacted each version of the budget that has been presented. The budget book included in the packet with this agenda item represents our best understanding of how the remainder of the current fiscal year will play out and outlines our projections for the next. In twenty twenty-five, we know we will see significant increases in employee benefits and the cost of property and casualty insurance by our providers. There's a large infrastructure project taking place on Cleveland Avenue. Prost will be conducting a parks master plan and community center feasibility study. There will be a leadership change for the L C S O Wellington squad, and our new treatment plants will be online using new and different amounts of chemicals and utilities. These are big items, and not even all of them are listed. Staff has done their best to ensure that revenue projections and cost estimates have been incorporated into the budget to plan for twenty twenty-five and the future. In previous presentations, I've outlined the changes from the last version of the budget that was presented. Agenda item F two has the changes since last week, which include an increase to the beginning fund balance following an update to the twenty twenty-four end-of-year expense estimates in the water fund for reduced billable acre feet from two point eight seven million to two point one four million, and a reclassification of the intra-fund loan payment in the water fund reserves, uh, are two of the largest driving factors in the changes shown in this final version. The ending fund balance has increased by a net one point two nine million since the projections presented last week. Agenda item F two includes a resolution to adopt the budget. The Town of Wellington's budget is based on our six funds, general, street, water, sewer, drainage, and park. We also capture all our capital improvement projects in the Capital Projects Fund, though those are ultimately paid for by one of the six funds. In total, resolution number sixty dash twenty twenty-four will approve thirty-nine million in expenditures from seventy-two point seven million in revenues and fund balances. Agenda item F three certifies our mill levy to, for property taxes to Laramie County. There's no change to the mill levy in twenty twenty-five. Resolution number sixty dash twenty twenty-four levies a tax of twelve point four three nine six mills, which will generate two point one million in property tax revenue. Lastly, agenda item F four appropriates the thirty-nine million in expenditures to each of the six funds. Wellington Municipal Code states that the annual appropriation be passed by ordinance. Ordinance number thirteen dash twenty twenty-four outlines the operating expenses, capital improvement projects, and debt service for each of those funds. Each line item stated in the budget book is incorporated into these appropriations. However, appropriations are done on the fund level. I do also want to call attention to the Town Administrator's budget memo, which is included in the budget book. While the financial data in the budget book will not change from what you see tonight, Deputy Town Administrator Hodeline and I will continue to clean up the story that accompanies the budget before it goes to print. If approved, we hope to have the final budget book to you and submitted for consideration of the G F O A Distinguished Budget Presentation Award in the coming weeks. Thank you for your support over the past several months and for your leadership and guidance in creating this budget. On a personal note, I want to say thank you for your patience and understanding in my first budget process. It's been an honor to serve the Board of Trustees and the Wellington community. Thank you. The Town Administrator Garcia and I are available for questions.
Thank you. Trustee Meyer?
No questions. I just want to thank staff for being, uh, reactive to the community needs and the direction of the board, and proactive in finding places to make cuts, um, to just make things a bit more, uh, frugal, so to speak, and increase those fund balances. Thank you. And thank you, Nick, for all your hard work. Good job on your first one.
Trustee Teetz?
Um, no questions, just comments. Um, I have had a chance to know Nick for many years now and working on different projects, and I was one of the ones that was very excited to see him do the position for the finance because he was actually part of our finance committee as a resident and got to see firsthand a year, probably a year's worth of how everything operated before he went and applied for the position he's in now. Um, I want to say it's the best-looking budget, I feel, to date, with as far as how things are lined out and highlighted. Um, the, the one thing I do want to say, and this does not regard Mr. Revadid.
Redavid.
Redavid, um, at all. Um, just more of a, a comment in general on my feelings about the water rates and where we've been to where we're headed. So, and it has been mentioned regularly over the last few months that it's not town staff's fault that there was a previous mismanagement of funds. And I do agree that there is no staff that serves us now that has anything or does anything to represent the nineteen eighty-three North Pooter Irrigation Water Contract. Um, this has not been fun for any of us, and, um, I'm also compelled to acknowledge that it is also not our current residents' fault that the costs of water have drastically increased. When many of our residents bought homes in Wellington, they bought in really different times. Um, residents previously purchased homes that had required green allotments according to H O A and development agreements. So the res, while the residents are majority users, they are also our majority revenue generators. We must not forget this, as residents could plan to forego outdoor potable watering in twenty twenty-five. This will create issues for the water fund revenue as we rely on residents' rates to support it. Um, my only statement to this is asking residents to pay a five percent increase while we issue a five percent increase in raises is something that still makes me extremely uncomfortable at this point. Um, but as I stated, I don't feel this has anything to do with our current staff. I think you guys have done amazing with what you have had thrown at you, and I am extremely grateful. I don't mind shouldering whenever residents get upset, and I know your staff has taken some pretty nasty phone calls from residents, and if I could hop on those phone calls, I probably would. Um, so just know that you still have our support, even when you guys are being not treated very kindly from some of our residents. Um, that's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Wiegand.
Appreciate all the hard work that you put in on the budget. Uh, I know it's been tough. I know it isn't necessarily exactly where we would like to be, but the one thing I need, uh, we need to understand is our town, our administrator, everybody that's, uh, helped work on this budget, I mean, they are trying to do what's best for the town within the guidelines of what we can do and what we have available. And again, I appreciate all the hard work, and I think you guys done great, so thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Cannon.
Mr. Redavid, thank you so much. Congratulations on your first budget. You can go home, have a cocktail tonight afterwards. Uh, there's no such thing as a perfect budget, but this comes pretty darn close. I appreciate, uh, the work that was done by all of staff, uh, to prepare the budget by your department heads, to, uh, evaluate how their expenditures are, review those capital projects. Thank you for listening to the community. Thank you to listening to the trustees. Uh, this is a much better product than was presented to us in October. Um, you know, sharpening those pencils sometimes can, can have some big benefits, and this is, this is one of those big benefit times. Um, like I said, there's no such thing as a perfect budget, but this is a balanced budget. This is a budget that, uh, meets the strategic objectives of our town. And the only, uh, the only reservation I would have at all is, is that, is that you know that, that promoting our future is very important to me. Um, we've had to scale back a few of the, of the capital projects, um, and delay those, uh, and that's, and that's, that's a tough thing to do sometimes, but when things are tight like they are, you have to make those cuts. But one of the things that I think we should all keep our, our sights on is, is that, is that we will continue to grow. Uh, and as we grow, we need to continue to grow smart, and the only thing I regret is there's not funds available in this budget for things like discussions for home rule or economic development. Uh, because in the long run, it's those kind of actions that's going to help us create the kind of revenue stream that we need to help support of a, a growing community like we've got. But other than that, congratulations, good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Trustee Daly?
I don't have any specific questions. This has become before so many times, and we've had the opportunity to give feedback. The process has been explained incredibly clearly, so, uh, I'm happy about that. I'll save any comments I have, um, for after public comment. Thank you.
Reverend?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, uh, Director Redavid. Excellent budget. I, I got to tell you, over the last three years that we've been doing, well, that, that I've been up here in this chair, this is by far the best-looking budget I've seen to date. So really appreciate all the work that you've done and, uh, do want to also thank staff for the tremendous amount of time and effort that, uh, has gone into this. I know that, you know, a lot of the time asking, you know, when the board sits up here and asks for cuts and that sort of thing, and asking folks to do more with less is a difficult thing, so I really appreciate staff and, uh, their cooperation in getting this done for us. Um, I do just have one real quick question tonight. I was just curious, uh, where, uh, the audit firm is at this point in time.
Yeah, um, got a update just this week from, um, Consultant Don Rhodes. All the last documents have been submitted. We are still scheduled to have a audit presentation next month.
Excellent.
For twenty twenty-two.
Excellent, appreciate the update.
My understanding is twenty-three is still expected by the end of the year.
Sounds good.
Thank you for such an amazing product. Um, everybody on staff that put time into this, um, you guys earned it. I know there was a lot of stress, um, anxiety, late nights, um, going back to the drawing board, trying to find things where to make cuts. Um, you guys went above and beyond to, um, present this budget that we have you for us that is, um, kudos to you guys. Very, very proud of you guys. You work hard for this town. You fight for this town, and you know, um, things like this matter, and you, you do everything you can for us. I appreciate that. Uh, that's all I have right now. Um, I will open up for public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak will be given three minutes and state your name for the record. No public comment? Okay. Um. Um, no public comment. Do you, uh, want to start off with comments there, Trusty Daly?
Yep, sure. Uh, not everybody has the packet in front of them, so I've been asked on the status of this a lot lately, so I'm just going to read it from the packet because it's written incredibly well. Um, regarding the, the budget for two thousand twenty-five, one of the, the, the core parts that are included in that relate to recreation and parks. Uh, one of the key findings for the two thousand twenty-three community service, uh, suit, community survey, excuse me, highlighted the desire for more recreational opportunities. In response, the town will be conducting a parks master plan and community center feasibility study in two thousand twenty-five. This study, a top community priority, will provide a blueprint for future parks, recreational facilities, and open spaces, ensuring alignment with residents' needs. This initiative also reflects community-centered planning and a commitment to enhancing quality of life. So a lot of people have asked me, what's the status? What are we doing? Where are we at? And the proposed budget before us right now includes these plans to make sure that we're getting a kickstart as quickly as possible in these projects that are incredibly important, too. Uh, the town of Wellington have shown up as top needs in every community survey, um, every outreach opportunity, every town hall where we invite people to tell them, tell us what they need. Uh, a rec center, more recreational opportunities, more amenities in our town has come up one-hundred percent of the time at the top of the list. So this is absolutely in the twenty twenty-five, um, budget, and the reason why I also want to highlight this is it's not just for fun and games. Um, recreation, investing in these kind of things actually improves the economic environment of, of a town, makes people love where they live, participate in where they live, um, and provides amenities that businesses look for in towns where they decide to reside. So this is actually in itself, uh, economic development in a sense as well, and it's, it's very important. It's not one of those direct things. If you build this, sales tax will do this, but it is part of the whole picture. Um, and I'm really glad that we're embracing that and, and investing in this version of the budget, so I wanted to highlight that, but otherwise, I, I've been incredibly happy with this process, so here's to another award-winning budget. I'm excited.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion on this item?
I move to approve resolution number sixty dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution summarizing expenditures and revenues for each fund and adopting a budget for the town of Wellington, Colorado for the fiscal year beginning the first day of January twenty twenty-five and ending the last day of December twenty twenty-five.
Second. That was a Wiegand. Uh, Ms. Clerk, make a roll call, please.
Trusty Cannon?
Yes.
Trusty Daly?
Yes.
Trusty Moyer?
Yes.
Trusty Teets?
No.
Trusty Wiegand?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Proton Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse. The motion passes.
Thank you. Clerk, will you please read the title for item F three?
Resolution number sixty-one dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution levying property, property taxes for the year twenty twenty-four to help defray the cost of government for the town of Wellington, Colorado for the fiscal year beginning the first day of January twenty twenty-five and ending the last day of December twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. And then Ms. Patty Garcia, town administrator, and Nick Re-David will present on this item.
Mr. Re-David went through the information on this agenda item previously. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Thank you. Okay. I will open it up for public comment. Public comment? All right. Do I hear a motion on this item?
I move to approve resolution number sixty-one dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution levying property taxes for the year twenty twenty-four to help defray the cost of government for the town of Wellington, Colorado for the fiscal year beginning the first day of January twenty twenty-five and ending the last day of December twenty twenty-five.
A second. Ms. Clerk, make a roll call, please.
Trusty Cannon?
Yes.
Trusty Daly?
Yes.
Trusty Mayor?
Yes.
Trusty Teets?
Yes.
Trusty Wiegand?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Proton Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
The motion passes, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for item F four?
Ordinance number thirteen dash twenty twenty-four, an ordinance appropriating sums of money to defray expenses and liabilities of the town of Wellington, Colorado for the fiscal year beginning the first day of January twenty twenty-five and ending the last day of December twenty twenty-five.
All right, thank you. They're ready for questions if we have them. Um, comments from the board on this item? Comments from the public on this item? Okay. Do I hear a motion on this item?
I move to approve ordinance number thirteen dash twenty twenty-four, an ordinance appropriating sums of money to defray expenses and liabilities for the town of Wellington, Colorado for the fiscal year beginning the first day of January twenty twenty-five and ending the last day of December twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Ms. Clerk, make a roll call, please.
Trusty Cannon?
Yes.
Trusty Daly?
Yes.
Trusty Moyer?
Yes.
Trusty Teets?
Yes.
Trusty Wiegand?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Proton Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
The motion passes, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Order, order.
Congrats.
Um, all right, on to reports. Mr. Dan Sepienza, town attorney, and reports.
Um, I want to let the board know that at the work session in December, this will be December seventh, I think December seventeenth, perhaps the eighteenth, um, we're bringing forward a set of bylaws for the board to, to discuss. This is kind of a continuation of a process we started, I started years ago, it seems, but, um, I, I think it'll be a really good conversation, so, um, I look forward to getting that to you. We're, I'm trying to put together a nice package, um, that'll have everything that's been discussed over the years, um, and, uh, I look forward to working with our new clerk on that. Also, this Saturday, I sat in the cold in town of Wellington and, uh, brought my five-year-old to the Wellington football game, and it was a blast, and so congratulations to the Eagles. That was great. Uh, I have had to now suffer, though, through my five-year-old running around the house for the last few days, uh, playing football and yelling that he is Wellington, and I have to be the bad guys who are Strasburg, so, uh, Wellington has just filled up my house this whole week, so.
Perfect.
But congratulations, Eagles. It was a lot of fun to be there.
Thank you. Um, town administrator, Ms. Patty Garcia?
Um, a couple of things I wanted to respond to Ms. Moret's idea about lighting up all of the, all of downtown. We are struggling with the amount of lights that we currently have. We had talked about potentially adding them into the twenty twenty-five budget. That was Trusty Daly's idea to add them into the twenty twenty-five budget, but we've decided to hold off on purchasing lights until twenty twenty-six. We'll have some of that downtown area done. We'll have a better idea of how many lights we need, things like that, so we probably will not be able to light up all of Main Street this year, but it's, it's not because we don't want to or we can't. It's, it's literally the amount of lights we currently have that actually work, so that will be posted. We, hopefully another year or two, we'll have some really cool lights in the downtown area, so thank you.
Thank you. Um, staff reports are in the packet. Um, any reports from the board? Trusty Teets?
So rude. I would love to, if it is allowed, I will totally, um, start taking donations from residents in town for Christmas lights. If someone feels so compelled, I am happy to donate out of my own pocket as well, if that's what we're looking at as far as getting Christmas lights up and...
We, we have some, but we just can't do all of downtown, so we, I would hate to get a mishmash of different types of lights and things like that, but we, we can put it into the twenty twenty-six budget.
Well, do we have a generalized idea of the lights we have?
We do, we do, but it's not enough to do all of downtown.
Right. Now, what I'm saying is, is I will be more than happy to donate my own money to buy more lights.
Wait, our lights are really old, so do you want to buy lights for all of downtown? Because what we have is very old, so to, in order to, um, make it look like it's...
Matches.
Matches, yes, simple words. Um, but we can talk about it afterward.
Awesome. Perfect. Um, so, other than that, the only other thing I have is I received a lovely email from the Wellington Chamber of Commerce and also from the Wellington Welcome Wagon. They are having a ribbon cutting November twenty-first at nine AM.
Thursday.
Yes, Thursday. And there is a second business that is included in the ribbon cutting as well, and it's called Your Home. Um, that location is thirty-seven twenty-five Cleveland Avenue, Suite L in Wellington, um, so also known as the Old Wellington Hotel, uh, area. Um, I will not be able to attend. I'll be in Chicago, but if some, perfect, if someone will be able to show up and support that, that would be amazing. I don't have anything else.
Thank you. Trusty Moyer?
Uh, I just wanted to say that, uh, Mr. Re-David and I are headed down after this meeting to the CGFOA conference. Um, he will be participating in many things, I'm sure, and I will be presenting on a panel, panel for affordable housing solutions for municipalities.
You're gonna do great. Trusty Cannon?
Thank you. Very proud to be a trustee in the town of Wellington. I didn't, didn't know how I would enjoy it, but this has been a, a blast. I've, I, better than being a, an administrator or manager. Um, much better.
I hear ya.
It's a lot, it's a lot easier, too, there. Um, last Thursday, my wife and I attended a, um, an event, a celebration by the Community Foundation of Northern Colorado. Um, if you're not familiar with, with the Community Foundation of Northern Colorado, this is an organization that has probably got, I think they said a hundred, two, no, two-hundred forty million dollars being in management, and they've given away, I think, twelve million dollars worth of funding, uh, uh, to individuals, to groups, and so forth like that. Uh, my wife is also working with, uh, Mark Gabber and his wife, uh, you know, they're doing the fundraiser for the, uh, for the community center here in Wellington. And the idea is to use some of the connections with, that we have with the northern, with the Community Foundation of Northern Colorado to see if there's a way we can help kickstart some of, some of what they're doing. Um, we did meet one with one of the directors with the Community Foundation, and he talked about having different charters in different cities, and, and he said Wellington doesn't have a, a charter and not, doesn't have a presence, and I said, well, let's see what we can do about that. So it's something that my, my wife and I are pretty interested in. Uh, this is an organization that's helped hundreds of people in, in this region, uh, over the years, and, uh, just want to give you a heads up on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Trusty Wiegand?
No report, but I do want to congratulate the Wellington Football Team. It's pretty awesome there. What do I got? Two more games possibly?
Semi-finals now?
They say semifinals and then the finals, so go Wellington.
Thank you. Member Ten?
Uh, no real updates. Uh, I've got, uh, Laramie County Opioid Abatement Council here next week, so nothing this week, um, but I did want to say thank you to our new Wellington businesses coming online here in town. I, obviously, the welcome, welcoming wagon's been around here for a, for a little bit, but, uh, very exciting to see the ribbon cutting. Unfortunately, I won't be able to make it there either. I am on call for my, uh, absolutely ridiculous job, uh, at this, so, uh, so unfortunately, I won't be there, um, but, uh, but really appreciate you guys and the business, so...
Hope your boss doesn't watch these. Uh, Trusty Daly?
Thursday's a big day in Wellington, so lots of opportunities for tons of fun. So we talked about ribbon cutting earlier. Um, the other thing that's going on on Thursday is the turkey drive for the Wellington Food Bank. Um, this is super fun. There's three drop-off locations. One's a Rice, uh, student drop-off, so as you drop off your kid, you also throw a turkey out at them, and then they put them into a truck. It's really funny because the kids collect all the turkeys. Um, they're trying to collect two hundred turkeys this year, so you can drop them off at Rice Elementary from seven to eight during kid drop-off time, uh, Wellington Middle School, eight to nine, and the filling station, seven to nine. Um, and, oh, there looks like there's a free drink from Sparge if you do the filling station. I didn't, I just now saw that. That's exciting. That's a fun thing to do. Um, so Thursday's super fun, so you can go welcome businesses, donate turkeys, and then in the evening, you can come for a little taste of Wellington. Uh, the Main Streets Program, Wellington Main Streets Program is hosting their open house annual meeting on Thursday evening at five-thirty here at the Leaper Center. Um, the, the reason it's Taste of Wellington is there's going to be nine, ten different, um, businesses, restaurants, food trucks, vendors from the Wellington, from the Main Street Market who are going to be here with tastes of their businesses. So come and meet the current board of the Wellington Main Street Program, help with elections for the next year's board, um, and then also learn more about the program, their initiative, strategic plan, those kind of things. It's going to be, it's always a super fun time, so I hope anybody and everybody can come out. You don't have to be a Main Street business. You don't have to live in Main Street. It is open to anyone to attend, and I hope that you do. Um, on the twentieth as well, uh, there's another food drive fundraiser, and it's at the middle school, high school, and it's a, it's a Let's Glow Silent Disco. Um, so that should be super fun, too. There's going to be cotton candy and other snacks there. Um, on the Prose side, Parks, Recreation, Open Spaces, and Trails, I do want to congratulate, um, Prose for a multiple, multiple-year project that, um, was thought of many, many boards ago of an idea of having an ADA accessible fishing dock at our ponds, and that has come into fruition this year thanks to, um, a ton of work from so many parties, but also by receiving a forty thousand dollar grant, uh, in order to fund that project. It was installed on a very cold day by our staff, and we really appreciate them, and those are fun pictures. Um, we're gonna, we're, the Prose is planning a fun party that's worthy of this accomplishment, and they'll invite everybody and anyone, um, probably just waiting for better weather and more fish. So that is the plan, so look out for a ribbon cutting first...
First cast?
Cast. That's the word I wanted. Um, some kind of celebration to come. Uh, the other thing is that we talked about, uh, the new equipment for the golf course is all come in and waiting to be installed, so a lot of those projects that they have been working on are really coming to fruition this year. Prose is doing an amazing job in addition to, of course, all the staff that's supporting, um, and, and everybody that's making those projects happen. It's really cool to see some of the things that they've identified as top needs for our town become reality, so lots of things to celebrate on that side. Yay, Prost. Oh, and their fundraisers. They just did mingle a main fundraiser for the memorial, the Veterans Memorial Project, so, um, I can say they got more than sixteen hundred dollars based on the fact that sixteen hundred dollars alone came from one business, um, as part of the efforts for raising money for the Veterans Memorial Project. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I don't have any reports. Uh, I did receive the email of the ribbon cutting. I unfortunately will not be able to be there either due to not an awful job. Uh, quite a wonderful job, just keeps me awfully busy, so, um, I hope that goes well. You guys should, both you should be there, so that'll be good. Um, yeah, so that's all I have. I mean, great working with you guys, as always. Um, it's really cool to see that proclamation come together. A lot of teamwork, um, went into that proclamation to make it something that we could present, and it's cool to see people coming together and making things happen.
That was my other, I'm sorry. Thank you, everyone, uh, especially, uh, Trusty Moyer, who kind of walks me through a lot of things and helps me realize that there's two sides to everything, and I really appreciate the feedback. Also, Trusty Cannon for his feedback as well on it, so it took a lot from all different sides, and we got it to come together, which I was impressed and super happy, so thank you.
Good stuff, good stuff. Okay, um, next will be our executive session. Um, those of you... What? Okay, okay. Um, this executive session, Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for item H one?
For the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and/or instructing negotiators pursuant to section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four E CRS regarding negotiations with North Pooter Irrigation Company about revision or replacement of the nineteen eighty-three Water Contract as required by CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two two D point five two A and two E.